Everyone, it is 5:15 on Monday, November fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, and the Carroll City Council meeting is now in session. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note all in our attendance except Brandon. The first item is the consent agenda, which is approval of the minutes of the October twenty-fourth and November seventh, two thousand and sixteen meetings, approval of bills and claims, approval of the resignation from the Parks, Recreation and Cultural Advisory Board, and approval of Laverne Dirks to the Parks, Recreation and Cultural Advisory Board to fulfill the unexpired term to May thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Need a motion to approve.
So moved.
There is a motion in the second. Base? Yes. Cott?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Bonami?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any oral requests and communications from the audience for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to the first resolution, which is the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen budget amendment number one. And it is five sixteen, and we will open a public hearing. And Laura.
This is a time for the public hearing for our budget amendment number one for fiscal year sixteen, seventeen. At the last council meeting, it was presented the items that have been included. As a reminder, all these items were items that were either started at the end of the fiscal year and had not been completed, or items that were put in our fiscal sixteen budget that we want to preserve the ability to do those, those projects or those purchases in our seventeen budget. So this would give us the spending authority to do that. The notice of the public hearing was published in the Daily Times Journal on Monday, October thirty-first, which is within the prescribed requirements of the state code. Are there any questions about the budget amendment as presented?
No.
Not seeing any questions from the public. Seeing none, it is five eighteen, and we will close the public hearing. And then I will seek a motion to approve the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen budget amendment number one.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion in the second. Bonami?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The second resolution is the two million, two hundred and ninety thousand dollar general obligation capital loan notes, series two thousand and sixteen B. And Laura.
If you don't mind, may I, if we can talk about both of the resolutions together for this?
That's fine, yeah.
And then...
We'll need two separate motions.
Two separate motions, yes.
You can do both at the same time.
So first is appointing the paying agent, the note registrar, and the transfer agent for this note issuance. We've worked with Bankers Trust for a number of years, and they do a good job. They're basically, they're paying out the principal interest payments when they come due. Then the other resolution is authorizing the loan agreement to actually issue the debt, as well as approve the tax exempt certificate and the continuing disclosure certificate. These two items are routine things. We see in every type of note issuance that we've done. They just set out a number of facts and promises and obligations that the city needs to abide by, as well as the continuing disclosure says we need to provide financial information through this system called EMA, or the Electronic National Market Access System. So we're just giving information out to the note holders and the bondholders, saying this is how we end up each fiscal year, as long as these notes are outstanding, so they can monitor and make sure that we still are financially sound. A common requirement that we've had in years pass in other note issuances, so these are nothing new. It's just a requirement that council takes action on these. Are there any questions about the information that was presented? I know we gave you quite a stack of information in this, in this agenda item.
We have plenty of reading.
Yes, it was plenty of reading.
Any other questions for Laura? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the resolution appointing Bankers Trust of Des Moines, Iowa, to serve as paying agent, note registrar, and transfer agent, and approving the paying, the paying agent and note registrar and of the agreement.
So moved. Second.
There is a motion in the second. Seaman?
Yes.
Bonami?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
And then I need a motion approving and authorizing a form of loan agreement, and authorizing and providing for the issuance and levying a tax to pay the notes, approval of the tax exemption certificate, and continuing disclosure certificate.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Bonami?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The third resolution of the evening is for setting the dates of a public hearing for the proposed fifth amended and restated urban renewal plan for the amended and restated Central Business District Urban Renewal Area in the city of Carroll, Iowa. And Laura.
So at our last council meeting, council took action to enter into a letter of intent with DMBA Property Consulting, to develop a development agreement, or create a development agreement, or in a TIF rebate with this company for improvements that are intended to be, that have started, I should say, in the block right across the street from City Hall. Well, in order to do this TIF agreement, we need to amend our current urban renewal plan and include that block area in there. And we've included a little bit of extra land, some public right of way, because we do have another phase of a streetscape planned for Long Fourth Street, and so we want to make sure we can preserve our ability to use TIF funding if we choose to, to complete that phase in the coming years. What tonight does is you have a copy of the draft of the plan, and tonight would be an opportunity to make changes if you see that there's changes that need to be made. Otherwise, we'll work from this premise as we go forward in the next steps. So tonight, the actual resolution we'll do is set our consultation, which we have chosen to do on November twenty-ninth. We're designating the city manager as a representative for the city on the plan, directing notice that all, that the affected taxing entities receive a copy of this plan and notify them of the consultation. And the affected taxing entities are Carroll County and the Community School District. We would set a public hearing proposed for our council meeting on December twenty-seventh. The reason why there is a big gap is we need to make sure we give plenty of time to give notice to the affected taxing entities, as well as hold the consultation, allow time for response, and then notice of the publication of the public hearing. So by the time you figure those dates in, December twenty-seventh, what was the next available date, council meeting date, that we could hold a public hearing? Direct that the notice of the public hearing be published, and that we have a copy of the plan on file at City Hall for a public viewing. Some of the main changes would be what have been identified, I noted in the, or in our memo here. Section four is where we listed out the specific activities that we, the ongoing projects, as well as the new projects that we've looked or plan to undertake as a result of this opportunity that has come forth. Are there any questions of what the plan entails or the process that we're going to be moving on?
So in that, in that photo, it was just strictly the blue area that was on that photo, correct?
The blue area, we do need to make a slight change to it, which we will make before we send out the plan. It was noticed this afternoon, late this afternoon, that we need to change the blue area slightly. There's a little bit too much of the yellow right next to it. The Court Street and then the parking behind City Hall needs to be blue. And then the orange would just be basically...
Just this building.
Just this building, block two three. So we'll get that change made before we send it out to the taxing entities and set the consultation, and we'll have that all done here in the next day or two.
Randy, how will that, how will that construction of what he's going to do in that area, how is that going to affect our streetscape? Will we have to make adjustments to it majorly, or are these just fairly minor?
Oh, no, they would, that would be a minor adjustment to the streetscape.
Okay. Any other questions for Laura? If not, I'll need a motion to approve setting the date of a consultation and public hearing on a proposed fifth amended and restated urban renewal plan for the amended and restated Central Business District Urban Renewal Area.
So moved. Second.
There is a motion in the second. Fluschner?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Bonami?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. We'll now move to reports, and our first report of the evening is the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen State Annual Financial Report. And Laura.
Attached to your memo is the State Annual Financial Report for the year ending June thirty, two thousand and sixteen. It is a requirement of our code, and it needs to be filed with the state auditor's office by December first. The first page of the report will be published, and then a copy of the proof of publication will be sent to the state. This report summarizes the revenue and expenses that occurred during fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, as well as gives any balance of our cash amount that we had on hand as of the end of June thirty. I have worked with our financial auditor to make sure that the numbers here coincide and basically say the same thing, pretty much the same thing as what our auto report will, once we finish the auto report. So I'm just looking for council's approval to go ahead and publish the first, the page one, and then it'll get filed with the state. If there's any questions?
Just simply a statement, Laura, you and the rest of the staff do a phenomenal job, and it's, as always, good to see the good financial health of the city of Carroll. Do the good work.
Thank you. Anything else, then we'll take a motion to accept the publication of the State Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion in the second. Cott?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Bonami?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The second report is the Carroll Municipal Golf Course House. And Jack.
Thank you, Mayor. At previous council meeting, we had asked several months ago to seek quotes, seek proposals to remove the house off the current location. That notice was published, was put in the paper four different times. July fifth, thirteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-ninth, it was put in the newspaper. At the time of the bid opening, the request, there was no interested parties on removing the house. With that, I had a conversation with Fire Chief Greg Schreck about the possibility, one possibility being is to burn the house and then have it removed, have the foundation taken out, backfill it with dirt, and bring it back to green space, open area. And Greg is here to answer any questions if that is a process that you want to do. In the memo, I stated Greg gave, gave me three, or three things that would need to take place. One is acquire a burn permit that he would submit for the city, a asbestos testing. We're in the process of that, if you want, want to proceed with the removal of the house, and asbestos abatement if we need to. So any questions with that, any other suggestions? There's some items in there that we probably want to be removed and sell. We could do similar like we did with, with fitness equipment down at the rec center, seek quotes, sealed quotes for removal. The heating system down below was put in probably about three or, two or three years ago. So that has some value, and you know, if there's anything else that we really want to go through and remove before, we can do that.
Anybody come through and looked at that boiler? Made any interest in it at all, or?
No.
Notified anyone?
No, I haven't really notified anyone that that was what we're talking about doing, but I'm sure we could work with the contractor that put it in, and get it removed, and then sell it.
Jack?
I'm sorry, go ahead, chief.
Yeah, just to know about the fire department side, as a general rule, we do not do controlled burns in town. I guess, I think back years ago, by the time I got on the department, we did one, and to protect the houses on either side, we used a lot of water, and one of the neighbors got water in the basement. Fortunately, it wasn't a finished basement, but, so the general rule, you know, in a, in a typical setting, I guess, neighborhood, we get concerned with, you know, starting a fire that's big in between houses usually, so we just decided a long time ago that we would probably not do them in town. I think the last one we did was, that'd probably been twenty or twenty-five years ago, that was in the city limits. We've done a few in the surrounding areas, some rural farm places, but I talked to my training officer, assistant chief, and we looked at this house. As a matter of fact, we've been training out there, held about three or four training sessions in there now. And just with its location and, you know, its proximity to residential neighborhoods, it's in a good location if the council would opt to have us do the controlled burn there. And as Jack mentioned, I think we would do it, I think maybe a little more towards spring, so we can get some training benefit out of it yet. And it does involve us notifying the Iowa DNR, and we have to do an asbestos analysis first, have a check for asbestos, and if there is asbestos found, it has to be removed by an abatement contractor before we can burn it, so. Now, we can burn it with the asphalt shingles on, as long as they're found not to have asbestos, but the problem with asbestos is when we burn it, the adhesive material, like in, say, linoleum or, you know, different asbestos containing material, when the fire burns, it, it burns up the adhesive material that holds the asbestos fibers together, and then they're released, so that's why we have to do that check. Again, we've had a, you know, in the last fifteen years, we've had a pretty significant number of turnover in the fire department, where a lot of our newer members probably have not witnessed a fire evolution like that, where we go from start to finish. And we'll do some intervention in there, but, you know, safety's our number one priority. We have to do it by NFPA rules and that sort of thing, so. It's on the table as an option, like I say, for the, for the general public, we do not do it, but in this case, it may save the city some money to do it, you know, if we go through the proper steps and procedures to have it done according to DNR rules. And like I say, it's, it's an option that's there for you. If you'd like us to pursue it, I guess, the department would like to. But that's, be your final decision, I guess.
Did you do the, did you guys do that house over by the city maintenance garage?
No, we discussed that at the time.
We talked about it, but never happened.
Yeah, we discussed that at the time, and then, again, in the neighborhood...
It was pretty close to a lot of the houses.
Well, you know, just with the smoke and things right across the street, you have to be real selective on the day, and we have to pick the day that we're going to do it, and an alternate day, and a lot of times, you know, if the wind's just not right. And the same will be true out there, but in all likelihood, you know, we have some space around to, to be a little more, I guess, lenient on the day and the smoke that's going to generate, so. Hopefully, it'd be a calm day, and, you know, in the morning early is usually the time we do that, right before, you know, maybe around six or seven, but I can keep you posted as to when that'll be.
Do you oversee this yourself, or do we need to bring in a trained professional to administer this?
No, I can, we can take care of that locally, yeah. I think the last building we burned in town, thinking of it, was the old grain elevator at the, the old Carroll roller mills, I think it was. That was a regional training thing that we did in town here, and then we did have a crew come in that, that did that training for us. But the, but the house, yeah, we can take care of that locally. Normally, we don't start a fire when we put them out, but in this case, it's a, it's a, it's good training for our department. Like I said, a lot of the newer guys have not seen a fire evolve, and that's what's interesting about them, is how they grow, and there's some good valuable training there, I guess, for us to do it. But again, you can decide, you know, it can either be torn down, or we would be willing in that location in town. I guess it's a little against our unwritten rule that we don't burn houses in town. But in this case, like I said, with the, kind of the, the location and things, it lends itself pretty well for us to do that, if the council's so willing.
The testing, the price on that, or?
I know for each sample, they take, I think it's a twenty-five dollar for analysis, and I would think you'd maybe have three or four hundred probably in asbestos testing. And then if there's asbestos present, and we can see about how much it would cost to remove that, and it may get to a point where if you just tear it down and remove it that way, it may be better, but, you know, I'll keep you posted on that if we run into a, to a bunch, and it's going to be a real costly thing to have it removed. I mean, it's like linoleum even gets down to window putty in a lot of cases that we have to have it test for, so.
Jack, I was curious. Should we do this controlled burn? Would you then anticipate city staff doing the cleanup and bringing it back to grade? Or would you think that that'd be something you'd contract out to do?
We'd probably contract out the removal of the, when we take out, when they take out the walls in the basement, that'll all be contracted out. We, and then we'd probably backfill it and, you know, reseed it and do all that ourselves. So partially, some of it contracted yet, but whatever we can do, and we have the equipment and manpower to do, we'll do it ourselves. The seeding, grading, we'll, we'll do all that.
And if we run into any snag with asbestos or anything like that, we'd certainly notify, you know, the council.
Jack?
Possibly a tree, there might be two trees that need to be removed, but...
You had mentioned, Jack, that you had advertised at four separate times for sale. In which publications or what?
Carroll newspaper.
Okay, Carroll Daily Times Journal?
Daily Times Journal, yes.
So we, we kept it contained to that, we didn't spread it on any further?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Is there a possibility to do that, to re, to put it back out there and broaden the area a little bit?
I know it'd be pretty, pretty spendy for someone outside of the community to want to move that house, removing wire, you know, the electrical wires and everything up above, obviously, that's a cost to them. Yeah, there's always possibilities of trying to do more, make it statewide. I don't know how successful we'll be, I, I don't know if that's, that's very out of...
I don't know either, it just came to my mind.
How much did it cost to, we do, we had one moved once before, didn't we? There one?
Building or a house, or?
A house.
Well, we did, we didn't...
We moved the one adjacent to the city maintenance garage.
Yeah.
We didn't move it.
No, but somebody else came in and...
Pretty much.
You don't know how much?
Sold it for very little, and then it was their cost to move it.
You didn't hear how much that cost them to move it?
See, that's the real question, is what's it going to cost us to dispose of the house versus what we could sell it for and be rid of it, which, thank you, I think you did a good job trying that. I'm just wondering if we couldn't broaden it more, but...
Sure.
Yeah, by the time, you know, you're looking at thirty-two, fifty thousand dollars if they're, you know, much beyond outside of Carroll. By the time they have to cut the wires.
There's just no expense for us past that either, though, right? Whereas here, we could have asbestos abatement.
Yeah.
We'd get some valuable training value out of it, though, too.
How long have you had it for sale, Jack? About a year?
We had it advertised in July. I would say we put the original documentation together in June. The golf course pretend moved out, ended January, February, got everything out of there. So we had it sat there now for about ten months, eight months.
And again, I would say if somebody came forward and, Jack, we were prepared to come to council six weeks ago, probably, and then someone thought they were interested, but I think looked at it and decided not to, so.
Cost to move it just outside of town, then they checked in.
Wanted the city to pay for some of the stuff to move it out.
Or, yeah, maybe move it across the golf course, so avoid some of the...
Take up the golf course, that would not bode well, so.
So again, if someone would come forward and express interest in it, I mean, us burning it is not a make or break deal. It would just be a benefit for us, but certainly, if someone could use the house somewhere, we can recycle it, you might say, you know, that's mine, too.
If your intent isn't to do it till spring, there's still, you've still got four or five months yet.
I think the city has an interest in renting it, in having it, you know.
No.
One thing I would ask, and this would be of all the staff, when we sell property, is there a way to be notified? You know, so that way, if we're talking, or the public's talking to us, we can have that conversation with people as well, in case there's ever any interest generated. But I'm thinking, you know, like rec center equipment, the house, you know, just, wonder if we have that type of stuff? There's just a way to notify us and say, hey, it's going out, or whatever. Maybe another avenue to get some interest generated.
Just want to be a salesman?
Maybe.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you come with it, not contact, not contact with people, I'd say go for it, yeah, absolutely.
One idea I would like to float on this, I've been kind of floating the idea for about a year now, was trying to think of a, a way that we could put golf carts storage out of the golf course. And this may be an opportunity, if we're going to free up that space to potentially do that. I did check with the staff before the meeting, we, we collect about a hundred and sixty-eight trophies, which means we have a hundred and sixty-eight golf courses, our golf carts on the street heading out to the golf course. So just come an idea I wanted to float is just to see if we could look at possibly putting up a golf cart storage, maybe something of twenty units or so, maybe there's more. Brandon would be a great person to ask and see what she's had for interest out there. But something that would be constructed in such a way that if we ever wanted to add more to it, we could. But if we could have to get some ideas on that, Jack, just, I, I personally don't know of any golf cart, golf course that doesn't have cart storage. I do think it is something that we could benefit some of our citizens from.
Yeah.
Is it something you've been looking at, Jack?
We've, just initial discussions about the possibility, with just, with the cost, you know, to build, you know, we didn't know. There, there hasn't been a lot of interest that's been brought to me, a few here and there. But like you said, there's a lot of them on the streets, Thursday, Tuesday, Thursday nights.
I think that's why the ordinance was passed, because it was just a little out, you know, expensive to build the storage units, and so I think they went that route versus building them, but...
And just so you know, too, as a suggestion, I was told to see if DMAC would possibly want to partner with us. I have contacted them, I haven't heard anything back. But I contacted Joel Unstrom, Mike Stout, just, I told him, I said, I don't have, I'm not in a position to make a decision at this point. I just wanted to know if they were interested in doing anything, so.
Sure.
That may be, somebody may want to talk to also, but... And I, I honestly don't have any specifics in mind, you know, for design or anything, but I would like some ideas floated, and just see if it's something that we could pursue.
I'd like to check this out, too. This has been a, a long-running thought on my mind, that we need to have some cart storage out there. I do golf, and that's something a lot of people look to, and it's a part of the decision-making process when you decide where you're going to have a membership to.
What do you do with the rental carts that are out there now, Jack? Are they stored indoors somewhere?
We store them underneath the credit clubhouse, and then there's a small garage just north of there that we store the rest of them in. So we're, we're tight for storing the golf course themselves, they store, the maintenance shed, they store some stuff in that, you know, garage, too, so.
Do you know about how many carts you store undercover, Jack?
I think under, this is a guess, underneath the clubhouse, I'm thinking about seven to nine, seven to ten. The rest of them are out in the other area.
So the majority are in the building to the north of the clubhouse, or?
Yes.
I kind of forget. We, we have those leased at this time.
We own them. We, we chose to buy them this time.
Okay.
That's a good deal, and we own them. When golf course is closed up, so we say that they, for the next few weeks, they'll be over getting, you know, maintenance, routine, oil change, spark plugs, and stuff, so.
But during the golf season, are those carts stored, too, then, or?
Yeah.
They're put in underneath every night?
You obviously don't golf as early as I do.
Uh, well, I don't, no, I don't.
Some are over there, then there's another set that's real close to the golf course building that are locked up. I'd say probably ten to twelve there, and then the rest of the garage.
About six, about six o'clock in the morning there. They got a pretty good process.
Running them out, I mean, it would probably be easier to have them inside of a garage, and just slide the door open and let whoever, the patron go in and pull one out, you know.
That's what, that's what I do.
I can present some options for you. I've been thinking about this, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can, yeah, let's put that down, and we can go over that, Mike. Any other questions with regards to the proposal about burning the house for the fire department?
I don't have any issue with it. I would like to continue advertising it to see if we can garner any further interest. And I, I think Mike's point was dead on. I think, I think I'll start asking around, see if I can find someone who's interested.
Okay.
I don't want you to not burn it cheap.
No, no, that, that's mine.
Pay to do that.
I would rather have it moved, you know.
I have a system on that works for Virgo or stuff in whole Iowa that they move houses and stuff. I was kind of asking her about what cost would be, and she said there's so many variables, it's unreal, but it's...
And when you start cutting those power lengths, that starts to add up. You know, once you get out on the road, you don't have to cut anything and start moving. It's not so bad.
Bad permits and everything else, it all depends on where it's going, and the width of the roads, and the time of day, and everything else. There's a lot of variables in moving a facility.
Do you want a motion to continue for the, the sale?
As long as we're not close to the sale.
But does the chief affirmationist start looking at getting a permit?
Yes, yes.
Well, about the, yeah, otherwise, I'd go for the motion to approve the, allowing the fire department to do a controlled burn for training purposes.
I'm fine with that. I'll, I'll make that motion, and just let it keep advertising.
Sounds good.
Second.
There is a motion in the second?
There is a motion in a second. Base?
Yes.
Benami?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The third report is the opening of the bid for the clubhouse retaining wall and.
Thank you, Mayor. Last year, a year and a half ago, we did a landscaping project on the northeast side of the clubhouse. That was done. It looks very nice. And now, when you look at the northwest side, as you walk the stairs, we decided that we wanted to try to match the northeast side. And this was another project we had bid out back in April, May, I believe, received no bids. Then we, let's just start, people started talking about a little bit more. Two contractors showed interest, so we rebid it again. And we opened bids on November eighth, two bids were received. Very competitive, very close as you can see. But the low bid would go to Moonlighting Landscape and Masonry out of Sack City for fifty-eight hundred dollars. This is complete removal of what's there now, removal of the flagpole and posts, take that out, redo all the work, rebuild the wall to match the northeast side, backfill it with dirt, and then staff in the spring, summer, we'll add the material, the plant materials. We'll do that ourselves. That's what we did on the, the other project.
Who performed the other project, Jack?
Local contractor in town, no longer business.
Okay, thank you. Are they confident that, either one of them, are they confident they can match the existing wall and make it look right?
Yes. It's not completely exact, but we've looked at it and, and it looks fine. I mean, so close, you, it's gonna be tough if you're on two different sides. So, yep.
Any other questions for Jack? Not all. Look for a motion to approve the bid from Moonlighting Landscape and Masonry for the amount of five thousand eight hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion in a second. Haley?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Benami?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
And I believe the contractor is just finishing up a project today and tomorrow, so they'll start Wednesday, Thursday. Should be completed this week.
Oh, wow. Thank you.
So, yep, get it before the weather changes too much.
Our fourth and final report is the 2016 annual planning session report and Mike?
Mayor and council, included in your packet for the city council review was the annual planning report, which was the product of our work session last Monday evening. Tonight, the request is if there needs to be any changes to make those changes this evening and then to affirm the plan. Just to go over it, there were three new initiatives that were added to the city's list of commitment obligations. That included to begin the rec center improvement projects, implement the housing study, and then also to implement a rental housing inspection program. There were a number of ongoing obligations that continued in the plan. Those included developing the library, city hall concept, implementation and financing plan, council adoption of new financial policies for the city, water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant improvements, continue street improvements within the community, continue the corridor of commerce, street scapes on the plan basis, including phases eight and nine, develop a plan and strategy for the rec center for long-term viability, programming, membership, financing, operational, and physical improvements, improve the intersection of Grand Road and Highway thirty, consider the street maintenance building and develop a finance plan for that project, learn more about and provide information about the community endowment fund, review the Grand Park Athletic District ISU plan when developed and investigate the Grand Park parking concept, trails, expansions within the community, city signs at entryway to the city, and finally, develop a sidewalk repair program. So those were the items that were included in the plan. Additionally, at the meeting, there were three items that staff identified that you wanted us to bring back as workshop items. Those items included the housing study, water distribution, street conditions, and additionally, community endowment funds. Certainly, if there are other plans or other workshop topics, and as we move on, some of the other items I mentioned certainly will be workshop items for the council. Just to reiterate, the action plan really will serve as a guide for us to implement the policy and actions for the council over the next year. Once the council takes action to approve that, within the next thirty days, our plan would be to present a work plan back to the council, and that would take us over the next twelve months. That plan will include for each item, a timeline, a responsible party, and then kind of a target date of how we're going to implement and when we're gonna move those items. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have on this tonight.
I know I met with Mike on Friday. I think maybe we can try and see if we can get one of the workshops Friday, when in January, and then wait till February, March after that, because we all have budget, and then hit them after the budget again, because I don't wanna overwhelm, I don't wanna overwhelm, because some of that stuff we can get. And make sure to bring some candy.
Mike, you mentioned something about twelve months. I heard that a couple times in there. I guess I just want to say that there's a lot of stuff in here and I don't wanna lose bits and parts and pieces of it. So if at all possible, I mean, can we stretch it out and look at a five-year plan? Can we look, I mean, I don't know if we've ever done that. This is still new to me, so I'd like to make sure we stay on track and keep things moving and keep people abreast to what's going on and things aren't just falling off because we don't get time.
Absolutely. And, and the idea behind the plan has always been that it is a number of years of projects. What I am talking about is how do we fit those to keep them fresh in the council mind and frankly, in staff's mind, and how we move those forward. So points will move in.
Now, we have a rec center master plan that has been fifteen years.
Probably.
Been going on. Trails is planned, it's been ten years. So they're there, but I think, I mean, unfortunately, and I feel bad at this point, because we couldn't get a lot in while Gerald was gone, but now that we have that replacement, I think we can start formulating, getting some stuff moving along again.
And we're at various stages among these. That's why they're called ongoing. And also, when you mention a five-year plan, the CIP, certainly, some of these, you know, will enter into it or, you know, are ongoing in the five-year CIP. So, you know, it, but we wanted, yeah.
And every year, we will review again.
And every year, we look at that five-year plan. You bet. Yep, you're right.
You know, there were a couple other things that were brought up at the planning session that I wanna make sure we do continue to follow through on. And one of them is one that I dropped the ball on last year. I would still really like to see us at the city council engage the public, be it through the print, radio, hopefully both, and try to get more information in a more timely fashion to the citizens of Carroll, and also start to try to elicit more feedback from them. We get lots of good feedback now, but the more, the better. Make sure that we're steering ourselves in the right direction. I'd really like to see that we, we communicate to the people.
One question I had is, how is this available to the public just to read this? I know it's probably available on our, on our website, but is there any other way that the public is able to see what we did that evening?
Well, certainly, it's on our website. We could make it more prominent, give it its own section if that's what you would like.
That's what I think it should, I think people should be able to look at that and at least review that we're, we're working on something. And I don't know the document any, any better than this to, to emphasize.
So it doesn't have that little tab that you gotta lay down and you can click on?
Like we're trying to hide it. We're, this is something we should be proud of and put out there, proud of what we're working towards, not. And it's like you see it emphasized a little bit more than what.
We have that, we have that feedback site where they can log in and give feedback, right, for citizens can do that.
It's on the website.
Yeah.
And we can do Facebook posts as well. That would be good.
Excellent. You could put the whole thing on, take it available that way if someone.
I think what you do is you drive them to the website, but you put a post on Facebook as people.
Put a link on the Facebook and they can click on it and they'll take them to the.
They'll take them straight to the website.
You have copies at the library, rec center, if you want to just pick up. If you don't have that access either.
Put each one in the golf cart, that's that golf course.
There you go. I can just stand up next to the wall.
Water bill.
Water bill, yeah.
We could do some type of a communication that way, condense it down.
That'd be excellent, I think. We're already paying the postage on it.
Okay, any other questions for Mike? Otherwise, I'll need a motion to receive the 2016 annual planning session report dated November seventh, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Benami?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Thank you. I trust everyone has read the committee reports. I'd like to thank everyone for another productive meeting and appreciate the input and concerns, and look forward to begin implementing the most recent annual planning initiative. Any comments from the council?
Just a second.
Oh, Barry, how'd you get in here?
The open says.
Oh, Barry, all right.
Was it six? Yeah.
Nobody has any objections to Barry. We'll come forward, Barry.
How about Dave?
I would, he does that every morning.
Come back in two weeks. All right, you got five minutes, Barry.
I got two minutes. First of all, I just wanna thank you again. Every day I go down to that merchants park project. I wanna thank you for, for your interest and the money and investment that you've made and Jack's leadership down there. There's been some different things that happened that needed to be corrected and, and, and Jack is on it. And the Carroll Athletic Association is pleased to be involved in a bunch of it. You see the storage building going up. We hope to have the roof on before snow. The press box is gonna be rebuilt. We're gonna do some painting that wasn't in the contract, but it is very, very cool. I have no idea what it takes to restore a building, but when you go in there and look, the pipes, the electric, the venting, it is just fascinating. The work they had to do to bring it up to modern standards. Rotary's doing a great job, electrical painting, grease, they're all doing great work. An old building is hard and they run into a bunch of stuff at every turn, and they're, they're able to adjust and make adjustments. And, and they've done great, great work. And I just wanted to, if you get a shot, go down there, take a look, because snow will start flying here pretty quick. But it is very, very cool. And again, I just, I just wanted to thank you. I'm gonna, sometime, we are working with the historical society to put together some historic displays, and these are very rough. And when we get them put together, some of the themes, the Iowa State High School Athletic Association tournament and the history, Kemper and Carroll High histories, the, just a photo collage of things we have found concerning merchants, semi-pro baseball, the merchants and the history of all of the teams that have come. Vicki Gash from the local historical society is just fantastic. Oh, primly, I don't know. We don't wanna clutter it up with a bunch of stuff, so we wanna do a nice job with these items, but we'll get your approval, of course, before we put anything up. And Jack's not very artistic, so we're hoping that the council will have some ideas. Right, Jack?
Yeah.
Calendar.
Barry, when you're done, don't forget to send a copy to the Iowa High School Athletic Association, please.
Of.
Everything, everything that we've done and what we'd like them to come and see someday.
Yeah, but when it floods down there in Sec Taylor.
That's exactly right. We're ready.
But anyway, I just wanted to thank you guys again, and I, I'm sorry I didn't get here in time. So we'll keep you posted.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's, it's fantastic. And like I've told you before, I've never been involved in a fundraising situation in which people come up to you. And I was out at the Motor Inn last week. I had a guy whose group wants to give a thousand dollars. Somebody had gone down and seen it, and it's a car club, and they, they wanna give a thousand dollars to it. So that statue of Jack that we're thinking in front, so we don't have enough money yet, but we're, we're getting darn close, that thousand dollars. It's not gonna be a very big statue. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, Paul.
Hey, Chief, I don't know if I can put you in the spot for a second. Would you wanna comment at all about the, the window shooting that's going on in town? I know it's not going out for you guys, but.
Oh, that's a good, good point you'd like to think.
The reward is still out there. That's the biggest thing. We've got some leads we have to hand out. We received a couple today that looked pretty promising, so just gotta play it out, see what goes on. I think the favorite for up to forty, that sounds about right where we're at since July. But the main thing is just if anybody sees anything or they know anything, just to contact us and take advantage of that. Two thousand dollars, five hundred from the police department and another fifteen hundred from central church. So pretty big chunk of cash. If somebody knows something, we just need to find that information.
Is it, was it just house windows or is it car windows, too?
Cars.
Anything?
RVs, camper.
Oh, okay. I've kind of been hearing bits and pieces, and I think by the time I heard it, it'd been going on for quite a while. So, yeah, thanks, Mike. That's, yeah, good point. All right. Any other comments from the council? Not all. Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Base?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Benami?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
We are adjourned.